Okay, we're on, live. Welcome everyone to the Township Council Meeting, Monday, May 18, 2020. This meeting is now called to order. Please rise for the salute to the flag, and then remain standing for those that passed with the COVID virus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We pledge allegiance to the republic of which stands one nation under God, and the government of which has a right to rule.
Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 9, 2020. A copy of notice was mailed to North Jersey Herald and News on the record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the also the township clerk on said date. This meeting is being conducted under the circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 health situation. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building.
And you, uh, council, can you please mute?
Who joined the conference?
Can you, uh, can you, council, can you please?
The conference.
Council, can you please mute?
NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building. Who left the conference?
Okay, couns- count- uh, Mrs. Kraus, did you finish reading the statement of public notice?
No, no, I did not. I'll continue.
We're gonna have to take it from the top. Council, can you please mute? There's been a lot of just- and someone's phone is ringing, or is it the professionals?
Everybody's gonna mute their phone.
Excuse me?
Everybody's gonna mute their phone.
Yeah, you need to mute your phone. Okay? Mrs. Kraus, let's take it again, please.
Sure. Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. A notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 9, 2020. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News on the record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the also the township clerk on said date. This meeting is being conducted under the circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 health situation. No public will be allowed to attend the meeting in person. A YouTube link to view this meeting can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, please re- uh, call the roll.
Councilmember Coordinator? Present. Councilmember Kawhi?
Present.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Present.
Council President Scobbo?
Present. Please also for the record show that Chief Post is present. Our council Joseph Wenzel is present. Is Tom Lemaniguis on the line with us? Okay, he's not here. Is that correct, Joe? Mr. Wenzel, you're here? Did Joe Wenzel sign?
Yes, county attorney.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 27th and May 4th?
I'll move.
So it was moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second, uh, can I have a second? Second by Councilmember Kawhi. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the minutes meeting of April 27th and May 4th.
Councilmember Coordinator? Did- I didn't hear that. What did she say, yes?
Councilmember Coordinator? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Kawhi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scobbo?
Yes. We'll get- we'll go right to council member reports. Uh, Councilmember Kawhi?
Thank you, Council President. Um, the domestic violence prevention committee met. Uh, we are, uh, planning to continue to send out, um, notifications through Facebook and the township email blast, reminding people to please seek help if you need it during the COVID-19 stay-at-home order, uh, but also to remind people that if they- if there are people that they believe may need help, to reach out to those people and offer their assistance. We obviously don't expect anybody to insert themselves into a potentially dangerous situation, but just please check on your friends and loved ones who you think may be, uh, in a vulnerable position. Uh, there've been a lot of, uh, news reports recently that domestic violence incidents are up in other areas, and really hasn't happened so much in Little Falls, but there's also been a concern that, um, a lot of, uh, child abuse and domestic violence incidences are going unassorted. So if you could just check on your loved ones, uh, if you're not in a situation, that would be, uh, a big help. Uh, also, as an update, um-
Excuse me, Al.
As an update on the-
Councilmember Kawhi.
Yes.
Councilmembers, please mute your phone. Go ahead, uh, councilman.
Thank you. Um, just an update on the town cleanup, the clean communities program. There were two GPW employees who worked on Saturday and cleaned up several roads, picked up several barrels of litter. So while we're happy that that is happening, the town is getting cleaner, we just also want to encourage people to reclaim some littering around the town. And that's good for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kawhi. Uh, councilmembers and professionals, please mute your phone. We're getting a lot of feedback, and it's very distracting, and it's gonna be difficult for the, uh, those-
[noise]
You see, so someone doesn't have their phone muted. Can everyone check their phone, please?
Yes, please, thank you. Thank you, councilmembers and professionals. Please mute your phones. We're getting a lot of feedback.
Council President, it still seems like someone has, uh, the line open, because you can hear everything echoing through.
Someone doesn't have their phone. Can everyone check their phone, please?
Do you recognize the voice?
What's up?
Do you recognize the voice?
It's my voice.
It's coming back.
It's coming back.
Move, maybe move your microphone on the other side of you. Definitely.
Okay, I think we might be in the clear.
Yeah.
Let's try this. I apologize to those watching. Okay, let's give this a whirl. Um, Councilmember Van Cherry?
Thanks, Council President. Um, as I've mentioned previously, one of the things I was working on with the members of the American Legion in town was to at least honor the men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice by holding a ceremony for the Memorial Day weekend. Um, an email blast went out, and I'll send some reminders out this week. We did confirm that on Saturday morning at 11:30, this select number of members in the American Legion are gonna be on hand to honor the men and women through a service. Now, obviously, in light of the, um, request that the parks are closed and is not open to the public, what we are doing is we are going to broadcast live via the American Legion post 108 Facebook page. So the details were in the email. The other thing I'm working on is I've been in contact with State Valley High School about, uh, us filming the ceremony on Saturday and then coordinating some, uh, dates and times Memorial Day weekend where the services can air on TV. TV, for those that don't have, uh, Facebook, they can at least, uh, watch it on television. So I reached out to the school last week and reached out again this morning. I'm hoping to have an update the next day or so in terms of what would be required so that we can broadcast the ceremony, whether it's next Saturday or even next Sunday or Monday, so that folks that cannot attend this year for obvious reasons can actually watch the services, um, on television versus Facebook if they don't have social media. So I'll keep you posted on that. But like I said, an email blast went out yesterday, and we'll have a few more that'll filter through this week so that everyone is aware of what will take place remotely. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention too is that, you know, next month, we were planning to have Little Falls Night at the Jackals game, but with everything right now in flux and the season for the Northern League that the Jackals are part of has been put on hold, that event has been canceled. The one thing, um, that I worked on last week with the Jackals was they're looking to pull together a virtual sort of opening day video, because they still wanna go ahead and have opening day virtually, even though it was postponed. And one of the requests that they had was having a message from Mayor Damiano, who has pulled together a video just to, you know, encourage residents, you know, in light of everything that's going on, and also send a special shout-out to the class of 2020, and then, you know, with a message too to hopefully be back at some point later this year upon the third state campus at Yogi Bear for a Little Falls night. So I just wanted to pass that along as well. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Van Cherry. Councilmember Seaver?
Hi, thank you. So, um, just wanted to send a reminder out, really exciting time. Two weeks as of yesterday, um, we will be launching our first, we'll be launching our very first farmer's market. Um, so that starts May 31st, and it will be held in the parking lot of the town hall. Uh, we have a lot of, um, exciting vendors signed up already. Uh, I do encourage everybody to, if you do have some social media and you have Facebook, we do have Facebook page, Little Falls Farmer's Market. You can go ahead and search for it. We're also showing and showcasing some of the vendors we have signed up. Um, vendors such as Snappy Turtle Farms, they're growing food specifically for our market. They test food, things like tomatoes, eggplants, and peppers, herbs, humber, just to name a few. Um, we also have a vendor, Meredith's Bread, which makes, um, gluten-free items, including bread, scones, and cakes, so those will also be available. And, um, also just a reminder that social distancing will be in place, as according to the state guidelines. And, uh, if you have any questions or concerns, you can always reach out. But really excited to bring, um, food to our town and kind of continue to branch out with a new sense of community and bring this event to Little Falls. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaver. Councilmember Coordinator?
Thank you, Council President Scobbo. Um, last Thursday, um, I had, um, I consider it an honor to, um, host a panel discussion about the census 2020 and how important it is to our seniors and our persons with disability. Uh, and we had a decent amount of individuals tuning in. It was a Facebook Live event, and the panel included representatives, uh, from the county and state who were experts in, uh, seniors and persons with disabilities, and the effect that, um, not filling out our census, uh, would have on the kind of federal aid and state aid that we would get. Um, in 2010, and I know I've stated this before on other, uh, council meetings, 2010, uh, the state of New Jersey and the state county were undercounted. And so that resulted in less aid, um, we didn't get the aid that we deserved, and actually as a state, we lost representation in Congress. So, uh, this is my pitch again. You still have time if you haven't completed your, uh, 2020 census, uh, and if you have family members that you know that have not completed it, please reach out to them, um, and, and, you know, explain to them how important it is that they return this census. And, um, something kind of exciting, uh, the rec center, uh, is starting a virtual rec activity. that they return this, uh, census. And, um, something kind of exciting, uh, the rec center is starting a, uh, virtual rec activity. Um, a big shout out to Pa- Paulette Peseo and of course John Case, who are organizing all of these events. Um, on May 11th, they started, uh, esports tournament, which is competitive, uh, video games. I think they had 28 kids already, um, signed up for that. Um, so of course you can go on the township website, um, in order to get more information. And then on May 12th, for seniors, we started a call in, a trivia call-in. And that got about 38 people responding. So we are very optimistic, um, about, uh, people participating and doing this virtual, um, rec center. And we're now talking about doing, um, chair yoga, um, via, uh, virtual classes and Fit for You and even the meditation class. And we are also talking about perhaps some art classes. So I think it could be very exciting, um, to be, uh, reach out to people with these activities and then they also kind of get to be connected to other people in, in the town. That's all I have, Council President.
Mr. Kuscha, I know you put out a memorandum through the mayor about whole, uh, not purchasing any, I'd say capital improvements for departments, but if, if the, if Councilmember Coordinator and the rec have to hire someone to do yoga instruction, that, is that under the memorandum that they can't hire anyone? Or that's just, uh, operational?
No, we didn't, we didn't say that they couldn't operate. We said that we would curtail any purchasing that was for inventory or, or future items. So we're going item by item, depending on the program that they're running. So if they have to hire somebody to do that, yes, we certainly can.
Okay. Councilmember Coordinator, is that understood?
That's understood. That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. So as the residents can see, that this is a very active council. Councilmember working on the veteran affairs, councilmember working on domestic violence and keeping the town clean, councilmember working with senior activities and another councilmember making sure other activities as a farmer markets is also going to go and happen for those people that maybe can't get out and get some food. So thank you, councilmembers, for all those good reports. Uh, we're going to move on to, uh, before I just want to say a few words. I have been getting a, a few phone calls and I think the mayor as well, from business proprietors who own businesses in town, question the fact, uh, when can I open? When can the doors be opened? When can we get back to the so-called quote "normal"? When can I get to my customers? Um, and the mayor can comment on that under his report. But basically, we take guidance from the governor and when the governor makes that move, I'm sure the mayor will go along and, and open up the town as, uh, as he sees that the safety first would come first, but I'm sure he's anxious to also get businesses going. Mayor Damiano?
Thank you, Council President. And as you said, we do need to thank, uh, each and every council member, including yourself, for all of the tasks that everybody has taken on themselves to continue to do just incredible things for the town and provide these incredible programs for everyone from all ages, from video games for our, our young ones to call-in trivia for our seniors and everyone in between. Uh, it really has been incredible and we have continued to make strides even during this extremely challenging and very different time for us, way outside the quote-unquote "norm". Uh, you know, so I, I will say in, in response to your question about reopening, uh, yeah, there's certainly, uh, you know, some, some desire to want to open as soon as possible. Of course, it needs to be done in a smart way and based upon the governor's executive orders. Uh, municipalities are not really allowed to do more or less than what the governor is, uh, authorizing right now. Uh, so, and a lot of the things where municipalities do have some additional say don't necessarily apply to small-town Little Falls. Um, the one thing that we are able to control locally, and I have had a number of questions about these types of things, are our parks and our tennis courts and things such as that. And in my calls, and I have three calls a week with the Passaic County mayors, it seems that there is an agreement amongst all of the mayors that we all want to do it sort of at the same time to ensure that there's not one town that does it a week or two ahead of others and then there's a massive influx, uh, at that tennis court or at that park or at that location that would put people in danger. So coordinating and doing this across the board is something that we're looking to do countywide. And again, that's for the public health and safety of, of everybody. Uh, so it is certainly being discussed regularly and frequently. I know the weather is beautiful out a lot of these days. I know kids are, certainly want to and need to get out to get some fresh air, but a hundred kids climbing in the same, uh, plastic tunnel right now may not be the best way to help curtail and prevent the spread of this virus because it takes one to infect hundreds of others. Uh, and we do need to ensure that this curve continues its downward trend. Uh, as far as businesses, like I started to say, uh, as the governor authorizes the opening of various businesses, whether it be hair salons, whether it be restaurants for dine and eating, whether it be, uh, any sort of, uh, retail industry that there is, we will continue to, uh, to follow, uh, the state's directives as are municipalities across the state. Although to many people's frustrations, um, it's not fast enough. The others were moving too quick. I think everybody is trying to find that happy medium to make sure that we remain as safe as possible while trying to get our state reopened and back on track. Uh, I certainly, as mayor, am going to do nothing to stand in the way of getting the town back on track in our, in our government, I'm sorry, and the, uh, the governance of, of everything, including the openings in, in the way of anything. So we'll certainly continue that trend. Uh, and again, I know too fast for some, too slow for others, uh, but we just all need to grit our teeth together and, and get through this thing together. Um, that said, I have a brief update, uh, with respect to, uh, the COVID update here in Little Falls. Uh, I will say thankfully, uh, there have been, there has been a major slowdown in number of positive cases being reported. Uh, there have been two new cases since Saturday in today's report that went out just moments ago as of 5:30 PM. And there have been six total deaths in Little Falls due to COVID, uh, to date. Uh, we had another death that was reported, uh, on Saturday, uh, which was the 16th of May. And the, uh, individual actually passed away on May 1st, unfortunately, due to the delay in the state system and some of the, uh, you know, the, the reporting. Uh, there was a bit of a delay, but it was made official just this past Saturday and my condolences are sent to the family and friends of that resident and that individual during these times. Uh, that said, I continue to provide updates about Bergen County Community Test, uh, college testing site, the PNC Bank Art Center testing site and the William Patterson, uh, site. Those are remaining status quo. There's not much change. They've sort of have a fixed schedule now. That information is available on lfnj.com and you can visit the covid19.nj.gov slash testing site to get daily updates on all of those in case anything is changing. Uh, that said, there have been a number of executive orders that have been issued by the governor uh, since our last council meeting, the most recent one today. There was an executive order signed, uh, allowing some additional outdoor recreational areas and businesses to restart their operations and those will be effective as of 5:22. Uh, golf ranges have some additional, or I should say have loosened some restrictions, batting cages, horseback riding, private tennis clubs, community guarding, gardens, and shooting and archery ranges. Uh, those were added to the list of businesses that can reopen, again, effective May 22nd. Uh, on May 15th, the governor signed an executive order allowing for the resumption of elective surgical and other invasive procedures, effective May 26th. And on May 14th, Governor Murphy signed Executive Order 143, which allowed, as many people were very happy to hear, beaches, boardwalks, lakes and lake shores to be open with social distancing measures in place. The order took effect on May 22nd. Uh, the order further stated that restaurants and bars located on the beaches, boardwalks, lakes and lake shores are to still limit, are to be limited to delivery and takeout services only. And then amusement parks and arcades and other places of public amusement located on beaches, boardwalks, lakes and lake shores to remain closed. Uh, on May 13th, the governor signed Executive Order 142. That allowed for the restart of non-essential construction effective May 18th at 6:00 AM with additional safeguards in place and outlined. There's also some non-essential retail stores that were allowed to reopen for curbside pickup effective May 18th, 2020, although no customers are allowed inside. And drive-in events under social distancing guidelines, uh, were open again, effective immediately. Uh, those were the executive orders that have been signed since our prior council meeting and my prior update, uh, here to the township. Uh, that said, we do have a whole bunch of other things happening around town that I would just like to provide some updates on. The first being the turf project down at Duva Field. We continue to make strides towards, uh, the, or, you know, the, the start of the bid and construction for the project down at Duva Field, the turf project that was, uh, discussed and is now up for approval this evening for funding by this council. Uh, there are, again, some additional, uh, issues, not issues, but, uh, you know, particulars being worked out with line striping, et cetera, as we'd previously discussed, and some other minor improvements around the, uh, the Duva Field area. Uh, the air conditioning is also, uh, almost completely installed at the rec center. The large unit that was in front of the building in the parking lot has now been relocated to its, uh, its place where it needs to be in the, the rear of the building. Uh, and the ductwork is just being completed and connected. Uh, so the AC should be up and running relatively soon. The one thing that everybody has questions about right now is the repaving of Main Street. Uh, for the people that have been out today, uh, along Main Street, you would have seen that the area between the Peckman River Bridge on East Main Street and Lower Notch Road has been milled. Originally, the contractor had anticipated paving tomorrow during the day. Unfortunately, it seems that, uh, even though there is still somewhat of a stay-at-home order in place, uh, to a certain extent, uh, the number of vehicles on the roadway, uh, seems to think otherwise and that, uh, the, it seems like everything is completely reopened. That said, the contractor, along with our police department, have determined that repaving that roadway tomorrow during the day, uh, it might not be the best decision. What we've decided to do is repave between, uh, the East Main Street Bridge at the Peckman River and Lower Notch tomorrow evening. So Main Street will be closed tomorrow evening, uh, I believe from, uh, 6:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Please get home, stay home tomorrow night, don't drive that area. The roads will be closed, including all of the little side roads that lead to Main Street. Uh, if you live along, uh, Hobson or you're coming down Cedar Grove Road, please understand that there will be repaving happening along Main Street in that area. Uh, so please avoid that area if you can and plan a detour route, uh, around. The sidewalks also continue to be, uh, upgraded along Main Street. As many people have seen Maple Street and Patterson Ave and that area has been done. Soon they will be moving on to, uh, Wilmore Road or they're working there now this week on Wilmore around the 2nd. And all of those repairs will be made in short order and that will all be followed by the additional milling and repaving of the rest of Main Street from the East Main Street Bridge at the Peckman River all the way down to Patterson Ave. All of that will be repaved over the course of this week, maybe into, uh, very early next week, depending on how much progress they make. As we have discussions with the contractor, I will continue to provide, uh, email blasts and updates on the website, as well as social media, about the sections of, of the roadway that we intend to have closed down for what periods of time. So please continue to check that periodically so you're not stuck in, uh, additional traffic and delays in those areas. Uh, other than that, I want to say happy Memorial Day to everyone here in town. I just want to remind everyone that although Memorial Day is and should be a very fun weekend, please just do so in a very careful way, ensuring that you and your family remain safe, uh, in light of this pandemic. Uh, that said, happy Memorial Day, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor Damiano. Does the council have any questions or comments concerning his report? Counselor Renzo, do you have anything to report to us this evening?
No, Council President. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Renzo, I, I think you are looking into a, uh, coming to us, uh, looking at a multiple dwelling, uh, ordinance? Is that, are you working with our building department? Or, I don't know if it's multiple dwelling. I don't think that's the right word to use. Where, uh-
Seasonal rentals?
Seasonal rentals. Thank you. Seasonal rentals. Right.
I, yeah, I could, I could say this, uh, Council President. I, I have been in contact with, uh, the building department with regard to, uh, proposed ordinance, uh, that we are in, in the midst of reviewing and preparing and, uh, hopefully be presenting to council in short order.
Thank you. Kevin, motion to, uh, to open the meeting for public matters?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, seconded by Council, uh, Member Al Kwadi. Excuse me?
Do you want to include the ordinances if you have questions about the ordinances?
Yes. Yes.
The ones that, that are up for hearing?
So, um, those individuals can put, uh, email questions or comments concerning the ordinances this evening under this, uh, public matter, uh, public comment area. Uh, all those in favor to open the meeting for public matters signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so by sending an email to pkras@lfnj.com. The email must provide your name and address for the record. At this time, there will be a 10-minute recess, which will allow the public to send comments and questions via email. At the end of the recess, the meeting will reconvene and all proper emails will be read into the record. Council President will determine if a response is needed and if so, shall direct said response. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. 10 minutes from now.
Excuse me?
Yes.
May I? And so I just want to make, uh, clarification that we will have one 10-minute recess tonight?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
So any questions regarding public matters or agenda matters are to be given during this 10-minute period, correct?
That is correct. Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Seaver.
Yeah.
7:30? Time?
Seven-
7:30.
10 minutes, right?
7:30. 10 minutes, 7, I'm sorry. You're starting at 7:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, did we receive any emails or any comments for this evening's meeting?
Yes, we did receive one comment.
And that comment was sent to the mayor, Mr. Kucio? Where'd it go?
Yes, it was sent to both of them.
Okay. At this time, Mayor, do you have that comment or a question?
I do, Council President. The question is from Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street, Little Falls. Question, Mr. Mayor, I was just adding up the amount of money that is being bonded tonight, and I almost faint after grants from the county and other sources. The total amount is over 5.2 million. Don't you think that this amount is too much? Should the township be expending all these dollars in these uncertain economic times? That amount represents just about 33% roughly of the yearly budget. So to answer the first question, if I may, Council President?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
So, the 5.2 million dollars is not all being spent today or tomorrow. It is not all being spent at one time. In fact, these types of bonds that are sought are spent over the duration of the use of that particular thing that's being bonded for. So, for example, a roadway improvement that may be a $500,000 improvement would actually be paid for over a 20-plus year period of, 20-plus year period of time. So while we may be borrowing the initial sums, and again, we won't actually borrow those funds this year, correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, they will be borrowed the following year. So just because it's being authorized now doesn't mean it's being borrowed now, and while we are certainly in some uncertain times, the economics of towns and states and different things, I think they need to, we need to continue to operate and move forward, although, again, as you indicated, they are certainly somewhat uncertain. These funds are not all being expended right now, right here today. They will be paid over a period of time, and I think even every recession or depression or any economic hardship over a period of time has shown that they do bounce back. So this is certainly not, you know, a long-term thing that will affect us in perpetuity. Economies are shown to bounce back over time, and you are correct, there is a large sum of money, 5.2 million dollars or so. But what you failed to mention, and I didn't calculate the exact number, is a very, very large portion of those funds is grant money that is being, going to be reimbursed to us, although we do need to pay for it first to then be reimbursed and refunded those funds. So the amount being issued or authorized this evening is high, and some of those are just being introduced this evening, not necessarily adopted. But a lot of those will actually be refunded to the municipality through a grant. So your number is actually, while accurate in the amount being bonded for, the amount that the township will actually take out of our pocket is a much lower figure.
Mr. Kucio, do we have that net number of what the town is actually picking up?
Most of that has to do with the turf field, and that's 1.2 million, a little over 1.2 million dollars in grants.
Okay. And the interest rate that we're borrowing this money at, would you say?
Well, the last note sale that went through just the other day was below 2%. I think the last one was like 1.75%.
1.75. Okay. Mr. Fernandez, if you want to do a follow-up, you can email Cynthia Kraus, and we'll entertain your follow-up.
And Council President, there's part two to that question.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Question two. And it is, can you explain Resolution A 2005-18 appropriation of 842,110 dollars is the amount that Little Falls must send to the county because of the coronavirus? Do I read that resolution right? And if that is so, who comes up with that amount? Thank you.
Mayor, we're going to discuss that resolution, Mr. Fernandez, under the resolutions, so the mayor's just going to hold off addressing that question, because that does come up, and you'll get your answer to that question. It's not quite correct that we owe that money at all, but we'll bring that up when it comes to resolutions. Does the council have any questions or comments to Mr. Fernandez? Mr. Fernandez, like I said, if you want to follow up to your question regarding the budgetary items, you're welcome to do that. Okay, we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Close the public here?
I'm sorry, yes, I have to close the public. I, thank you. Kevin, motion to close the public?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilmember Seber. All those in favor of closing to the public signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you. Motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilmember Vanchery. Before we call the roll, on the consent agenda is Resolution A and Resolution B. I'm going to ask the mayor to comment, this is concerning Mr. Fernandez's question about the 842,110 dollars, and also comment about the EMT program for Elmwood Park. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The very first item under our resolutions that we are asking be approved by the council this evening, the first is Resolution A, which is the resolution authorizing the township of Little Falls to enter into a grant agreement with the County of Passaic under the CARES Act. And what this is, is just the opposite of what Mr. Fernandez had, I think, been fearful of, which is good news for Little Falls. And what I mean by that is, and I'll give a brief background of all of this, during our three-times-a-week conference calls several weeks ago, the municipalities were all advised that the county administrator went to bed one evening with a very normal average amount in the county's bank account, and woke up the next morning to about 87.5 million dollars more being wired into the county's account. And what this was, was the issuance of the funds pursuant to that multi-trillion-dollar CARES Act that the federal government passed the couple days prior to that money being wired to the county. And what the county decided to do is to, and as they were supposed to, was to distribute these funds to each of the municipalities throughout the county. And what they did is they broke it down into three phases, and they took about a third of the 87 and so million dollars that they were issued, and they took, you know, close to 30 million dollars in this first round, and broke it up based upon the size and budget needs of each of the cities within, or municipalities within the county. So for example, Patterson being our largest city in the county, got somewhere to the tune of six or seven million dollars. The smaller municipalities were getting 400 or 500,000 dollars. Little Falls being certainly not the smallest, but absolutely not the biggest, we received about 842 and some change thousand dollars in grant funds from the county. And the intent of these funds is to offset any expenses that the municipality had in regards to COVID. So, for example, the Lysol or Clorox wipes that were purchased by the police department to wipe down the vehicles as the shifts change, that type of expense would be covered under this grant agreement and these funds provided by the county. Things such as barriers between the municipal employees and the public, things such as, you know, the fogger and smoke machines that are utilized to disinfect and kill germs and bacteria in our municipal building, in our rec center, in our police departments, in our fire trucks and police cars. Purchasing of additional things such as that will be covered under this grant agreement, and we can utilize these funds to pay for those sorts of expenses. At the end of the year, of course, there will be an audit, so for example, we're not allowed to just take those funds and spend them on anything that we want and say it was COVID-related, but if it is genuinely a COVID-related expense and something that the township did during the emergency already, or will do to prevent the future pandemic such as this, those types of expenses will be covered under this grant agreement. Again, this is only the first round of funds that are being issued by the county. There will be two more. The rules, as I've read them, and it's a fairly lengthy packet, but the rules, as I read them, are that the funds that are provided through the CARES Act to the municipalities need to be spent on or before December 30th of this year. I don't know why December 30th, but that's the date they picked. I guess nobody wanted to work on New Year's Eve, I'm not sure. But they provided for a December 30th deadline, and so long as the cost is incurred by the municipality by that date and it was COVID-related, it will be reimbursed. Again, at this rate, if it's the same number three times that the municipality receives, you know, we could be, you know, receiving about 2.5 million dollars over this period of time before the end of the year. Quite frankly, and thankfully, I don't think the municipality can even spend 2.5 million dollars in COVID-related expenses based upon what the guidelines have been so far. The one major question that we have had as mayors and municipal leaders is, can we utilize those funds to offset the lost revenues that the municipality has faced due to this COVID pandemic? So far, the answer we have received to that is, we're not sure, so it is definitely not approved yet, but it has not been outright denied or rejected yet at this point. That is, of course, what would be the single biggest, I guess, savings or saving grace for the municipality if we are able to do such a thing in the future. But right now, the 842,000 and change figure that we got on this grant agreement is just the first round of this 87 million dollars that the county got for the municipality, and we are going to be utilizing, again, those for COVID-related expenses. So, this is, I guess there's no such thing, but I'm going to say it anyway, this is free money from the federal government.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the council have any questions or comments regarding Resolution A? Mayor, you bring to us tonight Resolution B concerning the EMT of Elmwood Park. Would you like to comment?
Yes, so as many people know, and as the council members know, the township of Little Falls began a shared service agreement with the Borough of Woodland Park a number of months ago, about six months ago, to provide emergency medical care to their residents. And we are treating them very much like our residents, we're not balance billing Elmwood Park residents, but Elmwood Park is paying us 7,500 dollars per month to continue to operate this program for them, in addition to whatever we are able to collect from insurances from the residents or non-residents that are assisted in Elmwood Park. The program numbers so far, while, as there is with any sort of business like this, there is somewhat of a delay in the collections in the initial several months of these types of operations, in that the services are provided, it is then sent to our third-party biller, the billing service then sends it to the, either the medical insurance providers or the individuals who they provided the services to, and by the time they remit payment, there is usually oftentimes a two-to-three-month delay on the collection of all of the numbers that we're looking to receive. So for example, the things that were billed in just the past month, in the month of April, we haven't had 100% collection rate on everything that we're going to receive yet in April, so those funds will come in over, again, some April, some May, some June, and sometimes there's a three-to, two-to-three-to-four-month delay on those. So long as the trend that we are seeing with Elmwood Park continues and that the collections continue as they, as we anticipate they will, this does look like it can be a profitable enterprise for the municipality of Little Falls, as well as providing great services to the Borough of Elmwood Park. So I am recommending that the council, and let me go back just one step, the initial contract that we had entered into with them was just a six-month contract, and if they were looking to extend the services that we are provided, they needed to indicate in writing to us that they were looking to extend those services. They have done that exact thing and issued a letter to us, or correspondence to us, indicating that they wanted us to extend and continue the operation that we have there for an additional six months for now, and again, to be reevaluated. So I am, based upon that and the figures that we've been provided thus far, recommending to this council that we approve, or that this council approve, an additional six-month service agreement with Elmwood Park to provide EMT services.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the council have any questions or comment regarding Resolution B, EMT services with Elmwood Park? Mrs. Kraus, call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Chova?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, at this time, please read Ordinance 1383.
Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance Number 1383, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Installation of a Synthetic Turf..." "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Installation of a Synthetic Turf Multipurpose Athletic Field at Duba Field Inbound for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, New Jersey to Appropriate the Sum of $3 Million to Pay the Cost Thereof, Make Down Payments to Appropriate State and County Grants to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds.
Thank you. Have a motion to open to the public hearing on...
You've done that already, so just...
We should still... Councilor Wenzel, do we still have to go through this?
No.
Counselor?
Again, Council President.
Okay, do we still have to go through, have a motion to open to public hearing on 1383? Do we still have to go through the protocol?
Yes, Council President.
Okay.
For the ordinances, yes, you can consolidate your public comment for agenda and general items, but you should, you are required by law to have a period of public comment for your adopted ordinances.
Okay, so, okay. Let's do that.
I don't, Council President, if I may...
Go ahead.
I don't think you need to have an inordinate length of time for opening to public comment because the very, ordinances as opposed to general public comment are much more defined, so to speak, so a small period of time is not unreasonable for public comment.
Counselor, when we did the open public forum, we did specify that ordinances and everything was lumped into that one public comment, but we still would need to go through, open to public comment on the ordinances. Is that correct?
Yes, Council President. I would, it would be a little bit of a belt and suspenders position, but I would not want to see an ordinance be turned down for procedural purposes.
That's why you're employed by the council, Mayor. Thank you. So let's go, have a motion to open to public comment hearing on Ordinance 1383?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor, open to public hearing on 1383, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Two minutes.
Yeah, we'll give two minutes.
Anyone wants to send an email.
We'll give two minutes, if anyone would like to send an email on 1383. Mrs. Kraus, please notify us. Does I have to warm up? Mrs. Kraus, did you get any emails, questions regarding 1383?
No, I did not.
Okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing on Ordinance 1383?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilman Kwadi. All those in favor of closing 1383 signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1383?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kwadi. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll to adopt Ordinance 1383.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Van...
Yes.
Council President Skova?
Yes. Did you get Councilmember Vanchery's yes?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1384.
Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance Number 1384, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Acquisition of Real Property for Public Parking Inbound for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey to Appropriate the Sum of $500,000 to Pay the Cost Thereof, Make Down Payments, Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds.
Thank you. Have a motion to open to the public hearing on Ordinance 1384?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilman Kwadi. All those in favor of opening to public hearing on 1384 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We'll have two minutes for the residents to send in their email questions regarding Mrs. Kraus, did you receive any questions or comments regarding 1384?
No.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on 1384?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilman Kwadi. All those in favor of closing on 1384 signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mr. Fernandez did follow up with a comment, and we'll enter that into the record regarding the ordinances this evening. Can I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1384 at this time?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Vanchery, second by Councilmember Coordinator. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on 1384.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Skova?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1385.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1385, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Reconstruction of a Portion of Michael John Act from Main Street to Woodcliff Avenue Inbound for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey to Appropriate the Sum of $150,000 to Pay the Cost Thereof, to Appropriate a Federal Grant, to Make Down Payments, to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds, for the Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for June 8, 2020.
Can I have a motion to introduce Ordinance 1385?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll on 1385 for introduction.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Skova?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1386.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1386, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery and a New Automotive Vehicle Including Original Apparatus and Equipment in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey to Appropriate...
Mrs. Kraus?
...the Issuance of Bonds. Yes, can you hear me?
We lost you. You'll have to take it from the top.
Okay. Introduction of Ordinance Number 1386, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Additional or Replacement Equipment and Machinery and a New Automotive Vehicle Including Original Apparatus and Equipment Inbound for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey to Appropriate the Sum of $250,000 to Pay the Cost Thereof, to Appropriate the State Grant, to Make Down Payments, to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds, for the Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for June 8, 2020.
Have a motion to introduce 1386 at this time?
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second by Councilman Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll to introduce 1386.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Skova?
Yes. Councilmember Seber, I'm sorry, your yeses are hard to hear, so if you could kind of speak up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1387.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1387, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of the 2020 Road Improvement Program Inbound for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey to Appropriate the Sum of $675,000 to Pay the Cost Thereof, to Make Down Payments, to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds, with the Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for June 8, 2020.
Mrs., I'm sorry, have a motion to introduce Ordinance 1387 at this time. I'm sorry, did I ask for that?
No.
Did I ask for that? Where are we? Yes, no. I'm sorry. I stand corrected. So have a motion to introduce 1387, moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll to introduce 1387.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Skova?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read Ordinance 1388.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1388, an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Streetscape Improvements at Main Street, Phases 1 and 2, Inbound for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to Appropriate the Sum of $1,700,000 to Pay the Cost Thereof, to Appropriate the State Grant, to Make Down Payments, to Authorize the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, and to Provide for the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes in Anticipation of the Issuance of Such Bonds, for the Second Reading and Public Hearing Scheduled for June 8, 2020.
Thank you. Have a motion to introduce Ordinance 1388.
No.
Moved by Councilmember Coordinator, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll to introduce 1388.
Councilmember Coordinator?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Skova?
Yes. Before we adjourn, we want to just circle back to Mr. Fernandez's follow-up question to the ordinances. Mayor, do you have that comment or question?
Sure, there were two separate emails sent. One said, "I already took that amount into consideration, the grants, and as I said on my email, I took the grants off," in caps, "the amount being funded, thanks." Just to clarify, that is incorrect. And I say that because you indicated that after grants, there was $5.2 million being funded by the municipality. For a very, very quick rundown of this, very quickly, and I might have even missed some additional grant funding. On the $3 million for the field, there's 1.125 potential in grant funding. For the $150,000 on Michael John, there's $85,000 in grant funding. And for the $1.7 million in Phase 1 and 2 of the streetscapes, there's actually 1.3 million in grant funding. After you add all of those up and deduct the three grants that are to fund a portion of these projects, that actually leaves $3,765,000.
Thank you, Mayor, for the follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you, Chief Post, for attending our meeting. And Councilor Wenzel, and Mr. Cruzia filling in and doing a good job here for us as well. Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No.
Moved by Councilman Kwadi, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vanchery. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.